Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome all our guests to your April the 9th, 2019 Johnston County Public Schools Board of Education meeting. We've already been in closed session today and back in open session. We would start out the meeting with our approval of minutes for the March 12th meeting, 2019, in our regular session minutes. And you've already had these. I entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Motion by Todd Sutton, second by Teri Sessons. Any questions about those minutes? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Discussion and adjustment to the agenda, starting with Mr. Johnson.
No adjustments.
Ms. Sessons.
None. None. None, sir. None.
None, sir.
Dr. Renfro.
Only the one that you and I collaborate on.
So we will put Mr. Dolores Gill in section 7C4, which will be the bus survey. That's the only adjustment to the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the adjusted agenda. Motion by Tracy Zuccassi, second by Dr. Peggy Smith. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero. If we could, I would like all of us to stand. We had the loss of an employee, a TA at Cooper Academy, Carmen Pridgen Parker. And we had the loss of life of two students, Brock Alexander Curran of South Johnston, Gustavo Alexis Ormenta Valades from Clayton High School. Since our last meeting, all three are lives that were taken way too early. But I would like to stand and give a moment of silence, not only to celebrate their lives as part of our school family, but also for us to extend our prayers to the extended family. So if we could all stand and give a moment of silence, please. You can be seated. This is the favorite part of the Board of Education's monthly board meeting, his special recognitions. And I ask that Ms. Roberts please come to the podium. Thank you.
Yes, this is our favorite part. Good afternoon, members of the board. Mr. Wooton, chairman, Lady Vice Chair, Dr. Smith, Dr. Renfro. We start our recognitions this afternoon with a very special presentation, two very special presentations. As you can see, they are front and center. We're recognizing our retired board members, Mr. Butler Hall and Mrs. Dorothy Johnson. And I'd like for all who are here to, with, you know, and representing Mr. Hall and Mrs. Johnson, if they will come forward. I think Mrs. Johnson, your husband is on, perhaps is on the way. But we have some folks who helped with these presentations and getting them off the ground. So if you'll meet me at the front, and Mr. Hall, if you will join me at the podium. We're doing this in alphabetical order. H comes before J. So I'd like to read for you, for the benefit of those who are watching, because, board members, you have the bios of our esteemed colleagues, former board members, educators, extension service, right there in front of you. But I want to read these bios quickly for those who may not have it in front of them, because these are storied careers and lives. And we want to take a few moments to just say thank you. Smithfield native Butler Hall answered a call for a teacher need and soon learned that he too needed teaching. His original plan was to have a career in the pharmaceutical field, but after determining that science wasn't his favorite discipline, he decided against that plan. When he walked into the classroom for his first teaching assignment, he said, "The lights came on, and I knew this is where I wanted to be." Hall's preparation began at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, but he completed his degrees at, his degree at Welch College. His teaching career began in Coward, South Carolina, which is where I'm from, and as a seventh grade social, no, just South Carolina, as a seventh grade social studies and English teacher and coach. He also taught U.S. history and continued coaching throughout his career as an educator. In between his teaching and administrative assignments, the last of which was the principalship at North Johnston High School, Mr. Hall saw and experienced things that changed his life. From the coach at his first school, who asked the principal to divide his coaching supplement and give half of it to Mr. Hall, to the segregated teaching environment that taught him that separation due to skin color was not the best way to get things done, to the commissary work selling uniforms and products to great sports figures, Mr. Hall acknowledges that having good people around him truly contributed to his successful career. After his retirement, Johnston County Public Schools called to say they needed help. Mr. Hall returned the call and obliged for six months as an interim principal. He says, "It was an unbelievable time. It was then that I learned that elementary teachers, especially K-3, were workhorses in education. I thought high school teachers were. I saw things I never even dreamed. The things that these teachers do for children, I could write a book on that semester there. I gained a deep, deep appreciation for elementary school teachers." He also served as an interim principal at a middle school. "I've never had a bad job in education," said Hall. "Every place I've been, the Lord had me there for reasons that He had. Education was a great job. Education involves great people." After a 34-year career as an educator, this retired educator decided he would continue his servant leadership by running for a position on the Johnston County Board of Education. Now, after 12 years of service, Mr. Hall's tenure on the board has come to an end, but his legacy is long withstanding. And so, we have spent about three months, Mr. Hall, preparing for this particular presentation. And we are very proud to present to you an Order of the Longleaf Pine. And if Mr. Wooton and Dr. Renfro would join me here at the podium so that you can present this to him, I would appreciate it. So we've let the cat out of the bag, Mrs. Johnson. And Caitlin is going to help us with pictures. And if you will stand in front of the podium so we can get pictures, is that better? Want to move this back? And Mr. Hall, if you'll join me back at the podium, I will read for the board and for those who are watching what your Order of the Longleaf Pine says, and give you a moment to say a few words if you'd like. So this award states, "Roy Cooper, Governor, reposing special confidence in the integrity, learning, and zeal of Thurman Butler Hall II. I do by these presents confer the Order of the Longleaf Pine with the rank of ambassador, extraordinary privileged to enjoy fully all rights granted to members of this exalted order, among which is the special privilege to propose the following North Carolina toast in select company anywhere in the free world. Here's to the land of the Longleaf Pine, the summer land where the sun doth shine, where the weak grow strong and the strong grow great. Here's to down home, the old North State, and it is signed by our Governor Roy Cooper."
never even dreamed about. I've known a lot of really outstanding people who have received this award. Didn't put myself in that class. But I've enjoyed immensely a lot of blessings in my life. A wonderful family, my mother and father, my brothers and sisters, just the lessons in love and responsibility, sacrifice, the woman that God gave me, and opportunity to work with kids. I've met some outstandingly wonderful people in the course of all these years, and like I've, I said, I really have never had a bad job. I've always had wonderful places to work with wonderful people, and I always felt that wherever I was, I was there because I, I needed to be there because God had something for me there. And He always, that was true. But this is such a wonderful thing, and I just, thank you from the bottom of my heart, Mr. Superintendent, and all the people that were involved in this. It's a tremendous honor and a blessing, and I truly thank each and every one of you. Thank you.
Mr. Hall, I'd like for you to know that your letters of recommendation were written by our own principal, Dr. Ben Williams, our superintendent, Dr. Ross Renfro, and Carrie Lane Cockrell. Yes, and, yes, pretty good group, and Carrie Lane sends her regards, but she is out of town, so she sends her regards. Our next presentation is to Mrs. Johnson, and if you'll join me at the podium as well. I don't know whether my team needs me to move this podium. Okay? If you'll just stand right by me. And I'll read you her bio. "When I called them, I said, 'We don't have much information on file for you.' And I know they thought, 'This is not true.'" So they humored me and spent a little time with me as we talked about their lives. So Dorothy Johnson. Although not her style to speak of her achievements, Dorothy Johnson's contributions to her community and state are proof of an illustrious career as a county home economist with the North Carolina Agricultural Extension Service for 30 years. Mrs. Johnson also served in an acting capacity as county extension chairman. While traveling the highways and backroads of the county, sharing her skill and knowledge of the extension service industry, Mrs. Johnson was also a very involved parent who took pride in the Johnston County school system and took seriously her children's need to succeed. Her work didn't go unnoticed, and she was tapped to serve on her children's school advisory council, to lead the Clayton Elementary School PTA as president, and then to run for the Board of Education. She didn't take this opportunity lightly. "When you run for the school board, you should have good reason, a vested interest," said Mrs. Johnson. She has demonstrated her worth. As a member of the Board of Education, Mrs. Johnson was known for her practical approach to policymaking and execution, and her commitment to fairness and diversity of thought. She prided herself on listening to and representing all citizens of Johnston County, and ensuring that her actions contributed to the well-being and preparation of students for 21st century living. She regularly lobbied for a safe and disciplined school environment, and applauded character-driven education that promoted values, worth, and dignity for every student. Says Mrs. Johnson, "I received satisfaction that the students had a voice on the board who could speak on their behalf. Kids can't vote, but they have their opinion. My main goal was to make sure African-American students were treated fairly and consistently with all other nationalities. I just believe in equal rights, and that is what I wanted to show students. The most important thing is equality. Everybody, from student to teacher to custodian, must be treated fairly," says this stateswoman. Mrs. Johnson said she knew she needed to serve because the board had not had an African-American presence, and her ideal vision was to open the doors for acceptance for all races and ethnicities to secure seats on the board. Her resume includes a plethora of awards and honors, such as Partner in Education from Cooper Elementary, founded in 1929, where the Dorothy Johnson Media Center is her namesake. She was nationally recognized in 1987 with the Florence Hall Award for Outstanding Programs in various areas related to home economics. Her work in promoting and providing education about the sweet potato, one of Johnston County's most important agricultural commodities, was heralded. She hosted a sweet potato poster contest for elementary students during the Smithfield Ham and Yam Festival. I caught that. She also earned the Clayton Leadership Appreciation Award from the Clayton Rotary Club in 2005. She was also honored with the RJR Nabisco Extension Agent Award of Excellence for being one of the top employees at the State Extension Service, and for her effective educational programs. She also served as a member of the National Association of University Woman, Women, the Hokut Ellington Memorial Library Board, Chairman of the Johnston County Human Services Council, the Modernettes Civic Club, the National and State Associations of Extension Home Economists, and the Johnston County Alumni Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated. After 21 years of service, to include an 18-year stint as Vice Chair of the Board, this Petersburg native has retired from her seat, but not from service, to her community and to mankind. Ladies and gentlemen, Mrs. Dorothy Johnson, the Order of the Longleaf Pine. She made it. While you get yourself together, as I did for Mr. Hall, for those who are here for Mrs. Johnson, oh yes, Mrs. Johnson, while you do that, if you will go around the horseshoe. But I would like for you to know that her sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Incorporated, is here, representing and supporting, and her daughter, I feel like I know you, Rachelle, because she talks about Rachelle all of the time. Yes. that her letters of recommendation came from Judge, Reverend Judge is what I call her, but Judge Addie Rawls, Mrs. Tamara Barber, who is one of our own assistant principals here, and who else? Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. James Cosby, retired superintendent of Johnston County Schools.
Mrs. Dorothy, are you going to come speak, or are you still on the campaign trail?
Because I won't see you no more.
Yes, you will.
I thought we'd get out here at 7:30 tonight, huh?
Since I've been gone, you all are used to getting out at late, so don't mind me. I want to take up just a little bit of your time. Crystal, you got a lot of information, and you didn't get it from me. Great, thank you so much. I want to thank the committee, but most of all, I want to thank Dr. Renfro, and Mike Wooton, and Peggy Will, Peggy Smith, I know her Wilson, but, and she's long gone, and Teri, and all of you. I just, I've just learned to love every one of you since I've been on, since you've been on the board, especially the new ones. I learned the new ones, and I knew the older ones, I worked with them. I hate Teri's class, and I really appreciate that. I didn't, I wanted to just learn, didn't want any information, I mean, didn't need any credentials, anything. I just wanted to be a part of what you were all about, and I learned that a lot. So I would say that I'm glad my daughter got a chance to get here. This is Dr. Rachelle Johnson. She's a product of Clayton High School, the Clayton community, her band teacher over there. So we're at home. But I just want to just take a few minutes and say that Ron Johnson, my husband. I want to make it, get it straight, I always have to get it straight. Ron Johnson had to get up early this morning and go pick her up at the airport, and when he got back, he said, "They stopped and had breakfast." And he said, "I'm going to take a nap," and he's still napping. But Rachelle said, "I would be there," because she has to go pick up the rental car. Of all the cars I've got in my driveway, she's getting a rental car. So, but she wanted to be here, and she missed my oath of office, when I had that done, and little Ron was here, I said, "Little Ron," that's my son. And he, he was, he was in that picture. But I just want to say, I have a lot of people to thank, and I'm not going to take much time, but I am going to say that I thank the fact that my father, and I'm not going to say a whole lot, but he, he passed on, he passed away at 93. And one of the things that I would do when I came to Johnston County, well, I was in Warren County first, and they transferred me to Johnston County after one year, and wanted me to be in charge of the home economics program here in Johnston County. And I replaced Ms. Lucy Toode Delaney. And he told, he said, my district director said, "We want you to run this county, do what you want to, do what you need to do." And I, and I did the best I could. My whole life has been on helping people. That's all I wanted to do. I had no hidden agenda, none whatsoever. And I got this far because of board members that served with me on the board. And I've been here about as long as Jimmy Lawrence, so we, I think we came in together. But like I said, it was wonderful board members through the years that I have worked with, and they all had one thing in mind on their agenda, and that was to help children. If you don't want to do that, you're in the wrong place. You're in the wrong place. If you come here to use it as a stepping stone to go elsewhere, you better go on, because they don't need, the children don't need that. One of the things that Dr. Cosby told me, when he told all of them, and Mr. Hall probably remember it, and some of the others too, he said, "Children don't want to know, you know, what you got. You remember it." He doesn't, they don't want to know what you've got, how many cars you got, what, you know. They want to know if you care, if you care. And if you don't want to, if that's not a part of your agenda, then you need to go elsewhere. You need to find employment elsewhere, or stipend, or wherever elsewhere, because the children are here for you to teach them and help them, and all children, and I brought that to the board, all children, not just your child or your neighbor's child, but all children, A-L-L. And Rachelle know that, I spelled her enough, but, but keep that in mind, that the children are here, and they want to know how much you know, how much you care about them. And when you deviate from that and do other things, you're in the wrong profession. And I stayed 20 years, and every time I would say that I'm going to not, I was not, I was going to not, you know, run again, someone would always say, "Oh, you gotta run, you gotta run, you gotta run." And of course, you know, I didn't have much of a problem in running, and, and I still didn't, and I still didn't, regardless of how much computer you know and whatever you know. You didn't do that because of me. I have, I did that to myself, because I had other things that I needed to do for me. And my health is better. I had a good report from the doctor last week regarding my kidneys. He said they were up better than what it was last year, this time, during the time that I was running. So I'm not going to hold you up in, by talking too much, but thank you again. And Mr. Hall, we did a good job, I think. And, and you showed us by recognizing us with the award. And I've got every award in the state, but I didn't have that one. So, thank you, Ms. Peggy. I didn't have that one. I've got, I've got... I have, I did that to myself, because I had other things that I needed to do for me. And my health is better. I had a good report from the doctor last week regarding my kidneys. He said they were up better than what it was last year, this time during the time that I was running. So I'm not going to hold you up by talking too much, but thank you again. And Mr. Hall, we did a good job, I think. And you showed us by recognizing us with the award. And I've got every award in the state, but I didn't have that one. So, thank you, Ms. Fagan. I didn't have that one. I've got, I've got the fingerless DSA, you know, all of them. But this is one, and the one thing, I will say this, in going for the awards, one of the things that I never wanted to do was to apply for an award. But I had a district director that told me that how are you going to know how well you're doing if you don't put yourself out there and let people judge it themselves, let your coworkers judge, let other people look at it. And they can tell, you know from then how well you're doing. And so thank you so much, Crystal. And everybody here, I thank you all for what you, your contributions. Just being here and witnessing this means a lot to me, and you also.
Congratulations to you both, both well deserved and well earned. Thank you for your service. Our next recognition is the Linda Van Lasseter Scholarship Award recipient. We are moving this one up because our principal has an Honor Society event tonight, and he needs to get there. So I would like to ask to come to the podium, Dr. Twyla Wells, who is Executive Director of the JCC Foundation, and her president is here as well, Dr. Johnston. So, Dr. Wells, without further ado, if you'll recognize our wonderful student.
Welcome, Dr. Wells.
Thank you so much, and welcome. Thank you for welcoming me today. I do want to send greetings on behalf of Dr. David Johnson, who is with me today, as well as our Board of Trustees and our JCC Foundation Board of Directors. I'd like to give you a little bit of context. You're all aware of our JoCo Works Initiative that we'll be hosting at JCC, and it's a very collaborative initiative through our public schools, our business and industries, and our college. And so in part of that, in talking about it, we said, wouldn't it be great if we had some scholarship funding? Well, unfortunately, we lost Linda Lasseter, who chaired our Finance and our Investment Committee on our Foundation Board. She died tragically and suddenly on December the 12th. In doing that, we just felt a calling to recognize Linda. And through that, we have initiated the Linda Van Lasseter Women's Society. But the offshoot of that is that we will and have established an eighth grade scholarship fund. Our initial focus is on the I-95 corridor. We feel that is where our greatest needs are right now existing. So I am out talking with individuals. You have information in those packets there pertaining to opportunities of how people can make an investment of that. But our long-term vision is to have an eighth grade scholarship fund, so when our kids come on our campus every year and every fall, we can tell them they'll have scholarship funding waiting for them to attend Johnston Community College. And we know, working collaboratively together with you, that we can transform these students' lives and set them on a trajectory for success. So we hosted an event, March 7th, and we hosted our first Women, Linda Van Lasseter Women's Society luncheon. And we awarded an award to Linda posthumously, to her daughter. But we also felt it was fitting that we would also name our very first recipient for this award and the scholarship. So I'm pleased to introduce Sarah Godwin to you. She is an eighth grader at Selma Middle School, and I think her principal, Mr. Germanowski, is going to be here as well. But from, based on what I'm gathering and based on what Mrs. Roberts and the principal have shared, she's a shining bright star, and I can't wait to welcome her to JCC and to be a part of our programs there as well.
So I just want to say a couple of words about Sarah, so you can get to know her a little better. So Selma Middle School is extremely proud of Sarah and her receiving this award and this scholarship opportunity. Sarah is a determined individual who sets goals and does not let challenges deter her. She has the strength, the will, and determination to follow through with whatever career path she chooses. She's a well-rounded student in the classroom. She's also athletically participating in basketball, softball, volleyball, and track. There's no other female athletics in middle school. Sarah comes from a supportive and strong family that have instilled in her the value of education and hard work. They're extremely proud of her and appreciative of the opportunities that this will provide for her. Whatever future career path that Sarah decides to take, she has already established a pattern of hard work, persistence, and effort in pursuing her goals. She's learned early in life that it's not just enough to wish for something. You have to put in the work, the time, and the effort to make it reality, regardless of any unexpected challenges that may happen along the way. Sarah is one of the unique young people in this world who has already been able to develop a strong and positive sense of self, early awareness in life, that has and will help her do well in life, no matter what circumstances that she may face. On behalf of Selma Middle School, we are so thankful for the Linda V. Lasseter Women's Society in providing such an opportunity for such a deserving young lady. We want to, we want to thank Sarah's mom for being here as well today to support her, so she's always there. I just want to add, not to take away from Sarah, but to go back to Ms. Johnson, there was, there was something they left out. She was on every band trip as a band parent. She devoted time, Rachelle will tell you that. I still have the picture of Rachelle in that senior group on my desk, so.
Congratulations to Sarah. Our next recognition items involve our Character Ed students. And the schools being recognized this month are Archer Lodge Middle School, where Melissa Hubbard is the lead learner, Benson Elementary School, Tekisi Dunston is our lead learner there, Benson Middle School, where Dana Jernigan is our lead learner, Clayton High School, Dr. Bennett Jones is our lead learner there, and Clayton Middle School, where Catherine Trudell is our lead learner. And we will start with Archer Lodge Middle School, Melissa Hubbard.
Before Archer Lodge starts, all the parents, we welcome you and your students here at the Johnston County Board Education. This is your boardroom, so feel free to walk behind the board if you want to take pictures when your students come up, or you can stand behind the board the whole time. But this is, this is your boardroom, so go anywhere you want to do, anywhere you want to take a picture, and we're good with that. Thank you, welcome.
Ms. Roberts, we will recognize all the students, and then they'll come around and shake hands, is that correct? All right, thank you.
Courage is something that everybody wants. It's an attribute of good character that makes us worthy of respect. From the cowardly lion in The Wizard of Oz, who finds the courage to face the witch, to social activists such as Martin Luther King and Nelson Mandela, all of these have shown great courage, and right up there with them is Susan Tolatino Guterres. There are different types of courage, ranging from physical strength and endurance to mental stamina and innovation. Susan exhibits them all. Susan has overcome many obstacles on a daily basis ever since birth. Doctors said she would be very limited, but despite these predictions and situation she has and has been confronted with, she has proven them wrong. Her courage has allowed her to let nothing stop her. Susan had major surgery at the beginning of the school year, but continued to work from home to complete assignments. When she came back a few weeks, she was right on schedule with her peers, as this she had never left. Susan works hard every, Susan has worked hard this school year to become more independent. Susan has great relationships with her peers and teachers, and is a hard-working student, and always makes the best choices. Susan has displayed courage, not just this school year, but every school year, by showing strength in the face of adversity. As Christopher Robin says to Winnie the Pooh, Susan, you are braver than you believe, stronger than you seem, and smarter than you think. Susan is a true gator. Susan, you inspire us every day at Archer's Lodge to keep pushing the limits, and we thank you for that.
Chairman Wooten, Vice Chair, Dr. Smith, Dr. Renfro, and to the board members of our Board of Education. Today, I'd like to talk about Hemina Graci- Graciano. Hemina Graciano is an adorable young lady with a contagious smile and a big and kind heart. Although Hemina has faced a serious surgery this school year that required a lengthy recovery, she has remained courageous and determined to overcome despite the odds of a lengthy recovery. In fact, it was predicted that Hemina would be out of school for approximately six weeks. Well, that's not our Hemina. Hemina said no. She pushed herself to learn to stand again and then to walk again. She returned to school in just a little over three weeks. Although it was extremely hard for her to climb up and down the steps of the bus, Hemina pushed through it, and she pushed hard enough to overcome all those obstacles before her. Her courageous mentality has allowed her to be here with us today, as she is walking without support and assistance to go from one step to the next. So we are so proud of our very own Ms. Hemina Graciano.
Good afternoon. So what you're going to notice about Kaia, first of all, is her smile. And when we presented this to teachers about what student represented courage, she was unanimously voted on by her teachers. And what you need to know about Kaia is this is her first year attending Benson Middle School. She's in the seventh grade. She moved to Benson after she lost her home in a fire this past summer. When she arrived at Benson Middle, she had to make new friends while coping with the devastation of losing everything she owned. Kaia showed courage. You would not know it by passing this beautiful girl in the hall that she had been through such a devastating experience. She smiled constantly and quickly made new friends and won the hearts of her teachers in the building. She found strength in her new friendships, and soon those around her found strength in her example. Kaia is also a caregiver, and every morning she makes sure her little brother, Josavir, makes it to his class. She's active in the school. She joined the Ladies of Pearls. She's a role model in the classroom. While others may have used this experience as an excuse, Kaia forged ahead unwilling to be a victim of what had occurred, making good grades and attendance. A few weeks ago, Kaia would go through the same devastation again and lose her home a second time. She missed one day of school. What amazed her friends, teachers, and the Phantom Family as a whole, is when she returned, she still had an unwavering smile on her face. When others would have been overwhelmed with grief, Kaia was not. She was a model of courage. She has faced this ordeal with strength, dignity, commitment to her schoolwork, and we are honored to recognize her today. Keep smiling, beautiful girl. We are honored to know you.
It's tough to follow. Good afternoon, Chairman Wooten, Madam Vice Chair, Dr. Smith, Board Members, Dr. Renfro. It is my pleasure to present to you Ms. Genesis Sherwood. In my experience, freshman students often do not speak out in front of their peers due to the fear of being embarrassed or ridiculed. As such, it takes courage to be willing to take a stand among your peers when many are reluctant to do so. Genesis demonstrated that type of courage this year when she found a note in the auditorium that contained highly offensive material. Despite potential ridicule from other students, Genesis, without hesitation, turned in the note to the teacher. Furthermore, she made it clear to everyone that she was reporting the issue to her teacher. She also made it clear that she didn't think it was appropriate, and she would not stand for that type of communication regarding others. To be willing to stand up in front of her peers, especially as a freshman, and to state with conviction that doing what is right in the face of potential peer pressure is inspiring and refreshing. Genesis has quickly established herself as a leader in the school, being active in the CHS Core Program and participating on the cross-country and track teams. She is a positive individual who treats everyone with respect. It takes courage to do the right thing when others do not. So we are proud to recognize Genesis as the CHS student exemplifying this commendable character trait. Congratulations, Genesis.
Good afternoon. My name is Sandra Robertson. I am Assistant Principal at Clayton Middle, and I am standing in for Ms. Catherine Trudell tonight. And Clayton Middle School is happy to honor Gabriela Perez. Gabriela Perez displays courage on a daily basis, and she leads her peers both academically and socially. Gabriela strives to excel in her classes and always challenges others to engage in the most rigorous courses and learning experiences available to her. Last year, seventh grade students were given the opportunity to join the school band, but they would have to work hard to catch up to the students who begin music instruction in the sixth grade. Gabriela accepted the challenge, and with hard work, she became a vital member of the Clayton Middle School Band. Gabriela always takes risks by asking questions and volunteering to share her work and her thoughts with all of those around her. She is extremely helpful with her classmates and is not afraid to be a leader and an example for others. When we asked her teachers to share their thoughts, one of her teachers said that she admires her respect and attitude and her courage. So Gabriela, thank you for representing Clayton Middle.
And for parents and family members, if you'd like to step back here, we're going to have our students to shake the hands of our Board Liaison and our Chairman and Board Members. And if you will follow me, we're just going to start with Ms. Weckeser, and if you'll shake their hands, and you can get pictures. We're all done. Thank you so much. We're very proud of our Character Ed students. Our next recognition item will honor our CTE, Career and Technical Education Student Winners. And I call to the podium is Suzanne Luhann, Executive Director of Career and College Partnership. Promise.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon.
Sam, while we're waiting, do we need to sing "Happy Birthday" to you?
Sure. You lead it.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sam. Happy birthday to you.
Career and Technical Student Organizations are considered an integral part of instruction in career and technical education classrooms. CTSOs contribute to the attainment of curriculum competencies and are supervised by qualified licensed CTE personnel. Johnston County Public Schools CTSOs are affiliated with state and national organizations. Fifty-two Johnston County Public Schools students at the state-level competitions earned the right to represent North Carolina in the DECA, HOSA, FBLA, and Pro Start organizations. These students are eligible to compete at the national level. They will travel to Orlando, Florida, Washington, DC, and San Antonio, Texas in the next few months and will represent North Carolina in their respective events. There are several CTSOs that have not yet had their state-level competitions, and we will recognize those students at future board meetings. Today, we've recognized fifty-two of these high-performing students. So, first, I'd like to recognize our DECA students. This is our organization that's affiliated with marketing courses. And first up is Corinth holders High School with Advisor Samantha Tobias. And I'm going to read the names. So, when I read the names, if they'll come around and shake hands with our... Okay. So, Isaac Daly, Noah Evenson, Megan Partridge, Landon Chavez, Matthew Lee, Mara St. Marie, Nick Eberwine, Bella Pettit, Emma Faulkner, Ashley Shabo, Matthew Williamson, Gwendolyn Grimick, Joey Iorio, Andrew Messick, Caroline Sanders, and Jessica Dunn. We're going to go in the front, right? Come right up front. Then, the next we're going to recognize is the Clayton High School DECA winners with their Advisor Natalie Everett. And they are Alyssa Peak, Ella Carstens, Rebecca Jenkins, Grace Amy, Taylor Holshu, Sarah Colborne, Jaden Dryer, Najee Tidmore. And that's the Clayton DECA group. Next, we'd like to recognize the Clayton High School HOSA Organization. And HOSA's Health Occupations Students of America. So, it's affiliated with our health science courses. And the first is Clayton High with Kirsten Gibbons as the advisor, and Grace Molner, Mackenzie Duke. So, there's just those two. Sorry. And then, also with HOSA, our advisor at Corinth holders High School is Jan Rowe, and Amber Smith, Brooke Tebow, Angelique Vargas, Colin Jones, and Kaylee Bull, Alyssa Wallawender. And last, but certainly not least this afternoon, is our Pro Start students from Smithfield-Salma High School. These are our culinary... It's courses that are designed by the National Restaurant Association, and they host a competition that's just two events, management and culinary. And so, our Smithfield-Salma High School came in first place in management for their restaurant, Flipping Fire. And the culinary team came in second place for the state. But they're going to be... Now, they are Team North Carolina and representing North Carolina at the national competition. So, I'm going to call their names. Their teacher is Brenda Lillard, and the students are Andrew Fitch, Manaya Mazingo, Kyra Joyner, and Amy Perryman.
promise, it's like springtime, you know, rain showers bring May flowers. You know, we have... We tend to have quite a few students who are recognized at this time. We are going to go with our Science Olympiad winners. Those parents and students have been here with us for a little while. Everyone got here early today. And so, Elizabeth Dahman, our Executive Director of Secondary Education, will recognize our Science Olympiad winners.
And parents, if you would like to take pictures, please come behind the board and take pictures if you'd like to.
Okay. While we get Elizabeth, I would like for Brent Walston to step to the podium. We don't have the Hall of Fame honorees here, but we just wanted to say for the public, for the public's knowledge, who has been entered into our Hall of Fame.
Good afternoon. In your package, you have the programs from the Johnston County Public Schools Athletic Hall of Fame Ceremony. The class of 2019 of the Johnston County Public Schools Athletic Hall of Fame was inducted March 23rd at Corinth holders High School. The class of 2019 includes Reggie Barnes, included Reggie Barnes, Smithfield-Salma High School, class of 1985, Johnny Dutch, Clayton High School, class of 2007, Brian Honeycutt, South Johnson High School, class of 1992, and a posthumous induction of Mr. Phil Lee, Meadow High School, class of 1966. They were our 75th through 78th inductees. This was our 13th induction class, as you can see the pictures there. And Mr. Lee's widow and one of his daughters was present that night. We just wanted to make you aware of that. Thank you for those that were able to attend. And here's the information on the program of our annual Hall of Fame Ceremony. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Walston.
And we'll just... We'll move forward. We'll move forward with our...
Crystal, if Ms. Dahman's not here, just go ahead and move forward. We can have our coaches introduce them. Because we want to recognize... Doesn't matter who recognizes, as long as the students get recognized.
Yes. So, our middle and high school Science Olympiad, the background information reads that students representing three high schools and six middle schools in Johnston County participated in the Science Olympiad Regional Competition at Campbell University on Saturday, February 23rd. And if, as I call your name, you'll join me at the podium, so all may see you, the following students won first place during this event. First place, Herpetology, students Hunter Robinson and Denver Huffman from Cleveland Middle School. Their coaches were Wanda Morgan and Kelly McGee. Just standing right here. First-placed Meteorology, the students were Kaylee Beck and Hannah Louder from Cleveland Middle School. Come join me at the podium. And their coaches were Wanda Morgan and Kelly McGee, so all can see you. Okay? And also, first place Roller Coaster, students Ryan Hudson and Braden Rayner from Meadow School. The coach was Amy Dunn McLamb. Some of these teams will advance to the state tournament on April 26th and 27th at North Carolina State University. So, let us honor these students and coaches. Our next recognition are our Governor's School selections, and Dr. Amanda Allen will bring those to us.
Good evening. So, I'm thrilled to bring before you our five recipients of being able to attend the Governor's School this summer. And our district submitted quite a few submissions and nominees, but it's not up to the district on who goes. That has to be determined at the state level. And these five individuals that I'm about to introduce to you are those who have been chosen. We have Ian Davidson from Clayton High School, who had a submission in the area of theater. We also have Chris Everett from Clayton High School, who had a submission in social science. We have Cooper Mello, who is our submission from Clayton High School. His area was natural science. We have Carter Neptune from Clayton High School. His submission area was English. And we have Abigail Pittman from Cleveland High School, and her submission was in visual arts.
Congratulations. And Mr. Vertrano will bring our Employees of the Month to you.
Welcome, Mr. Vertrano.
Thank you. Good afternoon, evening. What time is it? Always my privilege to stand before you, recognize outstanding employees. We have two wonderful employees for the month of April. Our Classified Employee of the Month is Ms. Sharon Zodoss. If Ms. Sharon will please come join me. Ms. Zodoss serves as a member of the Accounts Payable Team here at Central Services. She was nominated by Tabitha Lee, Finance Director. And Ms. Lee had a lot to share. I'm going to read some of that to the board. Sharon is the definition of a team player by always looking for ways to assist her coworkers. She's a hard worker, always produces quality work, and is there for her coworkers, whatever the case may be. She is always willing to lead a helping hand, not only to the finance department, but to anyone she can within Johnston County Public Schools. She has collaborated with other departments to offer support and provided needed documentation to make everyone's job more efficient and effective. Above all else, she has an enthusiastic, positive attitude and does everything she can to bring smiles to everyone's faces. And when we met you yesterday and surprised you, you brought smiles to everyone's faces. So, that is true. Thank you for all you do, and congratulations on being our Classified Employee of the Month. You stand right here. We're going to wait. Our Certified Employee of the Month is Ms. Jennifer Welch. We surprised you too, didn't we? During her planning time, trying to plan away, wherever you are, we come with the balloons and we surprise you. Ms. Welch serves as a 4th grade teacher at Riverdale Elementary School. She was nominated by a parent. The parent shared that Ms. Welch exemplifies an educator moving from good to great. She offers her own time to help tutor students in math by allowing them to come in before school and practice. She also provides snacks to those who are attending sessions so they do not go hungry. Her participation is not only within the four walls of the building, but out in the community as well. We always see Ms. Welch at school-community events. It is quite evident that her students love her, and she loves her students. Ms. Welch is always in constant contact with us and keeps everyone updated on class events. We're not sure where she finds all these extra hours in the day. If you're looking for a teacher who is a positive role model for students, please look no further than Ms. Welch. Ms. Welch, thank you for all you do. Congratulations. And if both of you would speak to the board. And for you both, I shared we had some more goodies, a certificate, a keychain, and a gift card. Congratulations.
We have no advisor board appointments, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Renfro.
Mr. Chairman, this time I'll ask that our board approve Consent Item 7A1A through 7A1K.
Consent agenda is an action item. Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Smith, second by Ronald Johnson. Any questions? If not, all those in favor? All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Dr. Renfro.
Mr. Chairman, it's the springtime of year, and we start working on our local budget. Mr. Stanley and his team have been working diligently. We've had the opportunity to meet with county manager and finance folks from Johnston County, as well as want to commend our finance committee here with the Board of Education for having three-on-three sessions with their counterparts from the county commission. We have another one of those sessions scheduled coming up in the next couple of weeks, trying to get as many questions answered about budget ahead of time. So, we appreciate our county commissioners and our Board of Education as we work collaboratively to put our students and teachers in a position to be successful in our public school system. I remind everyone today that the board we present is a draft budget. Also, would remind you that our Budget Work Session for the Spring, which is open to the public... the public, is scheduled for Monday, April 29th, at 5:00 in this boardroom. So what we do today is part of general statute in presenting a draft tentative budget to our Board of Education. We will bring that budget back in May for approval, and from there, we will forward it on to our County Commissioners. So we present the 2019-2020 budget to you today in its draft form.
Any questions from the board? This is the Information Item. Yeah. No questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Board Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, and Dr. Renfro. Today I have three items for you. First is Board Exhibit 7B1. This is an update prepared as of March, as of early March, because we were involved in an audit at that time. So we've done the data from that point forward or backward. But this is an update on the Career and Technical Education High School Courses and Work-Based Learning, to explain the difference between some of the parts of that program and to give some numbers to you. So first, the first slide that you will see is our Job Shadow Participants, and I want to explain what job shadowing, go to the second slide, excuse me, job shadowing. It's usually a part of the day that educational experience introduces a student to a particular job or career. It pairs them with an employee of the business, industry, or agency. These numbers were as of March 8th. This continues to be offered to students. And if you'll note, SSS has not had their job shadow event yet, but they will, so you can see the breakdown there by school for job shadowing. And then if we'll go on to the next slide, Internship Participants. An internship is a little bit different. It's a work-based learning experience, and a student participates actually at a job site in the daily operations, under the direct supervision of a business mentor. So these are students who are currently earning high school credit for an internship experience. They are required to have 135 hours. These courses that are represented include Early Childhood, Nursing Fundamentals, Veterinary Assisting, and Career Technical Education. So those numbers are again broken out by school. Pre-apprenticeship, we have a couple of programs there, again outlined by school. Pre-apprenticeship means it's a skilled occupational training. It combines practical work experiences with related academic and technical instruction. These students have to work their schedules around the work, the job site work, and they go to school and they work at that job. And again, that is broken out. Any questions about any of this as we go? Just stop me and we'll go through. Then we have included a description, and I won't read each of these, because I'm sure you can prepare those, but this is a summary of the Career and Technical Education Courses offered at the high school and the programs by school, because every school doesn't have every program. So if you continue through those, that shows you course enrollment numbers, the actual courses, and that's broken out by school. Are there any questions about this as an information item for you? Are there any questions about anything in this document that I can answer?
Dr. Coats, go ahead. How many businesses participate in the Job Shadow Program and the Internship?
I do not know the exact number of businesses. I can find that out. So the actual number of businesses, I will ask and find out for you.
And for the internship, which ones participate?
On our internship, we have the, as we've listed the four areas, but you want the specific businesses for those? I'll be glad to get those.
One other, I may have, I might have overlooked it when I was looking through, but is the culinary program considered?
The culinary program is school-based. I don't, they don't go out and work on a job site. They do that all at the school.
All right.
So they've done everything that they do. They have a cafeteria, a little cafe thing there at the school, that they serve meals. That might be a possibility, and I will inquire about that.
So the auto mechanics, is that school-based, or do they actually go out?
Auto mechanics, it will depend upon, all auto mechanics programs are offered at the school. If any of these internships and apprenticeships, they could be in that area. When I find out the businesses, I won't know that exactly. I don't know exactly if they go out to a business or not. I'm sorry, Ms. Luhon was not able to be, she could answer these questions.
School-based, but it could be possible for a student to have an early lease and go and work at a local garage as a mechanic.
So what would be the difference, then, in the culinary program being school-based and the auto mechanics being school-based, but we don't consider it in the same light, I guess is where I'm going?
Correct. I don't think our Pro Start students are going out and, you know, they may have a job at a pizza inn at night, but it may, it's not an internship, it's just a part-time job.
It has to be written into the course component for it to be an internship or an apprenticeship. If it's just a course and its description, just what happens within the course, that's not included in an internship or an apprenticeship or shadow.
I guess I didn't say it quite right.
I'm not understanding.
Right, so auto mechanics is not an internship or a pre-apprenticeship. It's a school-based program. And the culinary program is a school-based program, but we don't consider it in these numbers, but auto mechanics is considered in. So that's, I'm trying to understand why that's not considered.
So the question I'm hearing you ask is, what are the specific programs that offer internships and apprenticeships? Okay, I'm misunderstanding then. I'm sorry.
So if we look, if we go down to Trade and Industrial Education Course Enrollment, we have auto mechanics, and we have carpentry, and I'm assuming those are all school-based, not an apprenticeship.
Yes, we, we.
An internship.
This includes the courses taught at each school. Is that, am I looking at the right page?
Right. Is the culinary program not considered in the same light as these programs?
Yes, the culinary program will have a multitude of courses, so let's look, let me find that. It should, it would be called Foods Courses. So if you look at...
Okay, I saw foods. That's why I was trying to make sure what was what.
That's the culinary, yes ma'am. Foods are the culinary program.
Got it.
So there's Foods Courses. I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Semantics is everything. But are there questions, and I will get those businesses for you. Are there questions about anything else that I can answer, or we'll find the answer if I can't answer it? Okay?
Thank you so much for pulling this together. It's wonderful.
Well, thanks Suzanne Luhon who pulled it, and she would have, she did work hard on her audit, and I will share the thanks with her, because she did work hard to get those numbers for you. Okay, the next item I have for you is Board Exhibit 7B2. This is a preliminary, just quick update on our survey for academically and intellectually gifted program, beginning in February, before we had Panorama. So we are doing this analysis ourselves, and we ask open-ended questions, and I don't have to tell you that that takes a lot longer to analyze. So we're analyzing that. In past years, when we've done the AIG survey, it's been a sampling of students. This year, we sent it to every student, every parent, and the teachers. So we sampled, we heard from 1,000 students, 350 parents, 150 teachers and principals elected to respond, and that's a pretty good number for our AIG population. And we are in the process of redacting identifiable information from their open responses, but at this point in the analysis, and we'll have a full analysis when it's completed, we can give you a general summary of what we're hearing. So from students, what we're hearing is they don't feel challenged by their assignments, and I bet you've heard that as well. And they want more opportunities to work with students who have similar learner profiles and topics of interest. So that's, that's the two main things coming from students now. From parents, we are hearing they want a report on that they know who to contact about AIG services and how to get information. They just want, who do I call? What can they tell me? When I have a question, who can answer it? And that's a good question. They would like more communication concerning opportunities for their children. They would like a report that shows how the assignments provided to their children are actually being differentiated for the gifted end of the learning spectrum. And they would like more opportunities for their children with problem-based learning and critical thinking skills. So that's from parents. From teachers, they would like, we're hearing so far, that they would like, most, most of them say they know where to find information, so there's not a question for them about where to find it on gifted services and offering tiered assignments to students. They said that they do utilize learner profile and differentiate based on pre-test results and often change instruction based on pre-test results from those students. They too say they would like more resources, more support in SEL, which of course, Social Emotional Learning, and more communication. And from administrators, from the principal group, we're hearing that they feel there's a need for more targeted professional development, communication, resources, and more opportunities for advanced learners and personnel, more personnel to support those opportunities in the schools. And that is a very general finding. It's the themed finding, but we will have more detailed information later.
Okay. Are we still training teachers in AIG strategies? We used to have certification and local...
Not at the level that we once did. We are not. We are, we are trying to provide support when it's requested, but that gets back to who do I call? I need more resources, that type of thing. We have promoted individualized learning. Of course, that should include the academically intellectually gifted child, but not at the level where we focused on just academic and gifted students. We have not provided as much training as we did in past years.
As, as you move forward in the planning process for AIG delivery services for next year, I'm sure you'll use this survey data. But also, are we making a concerted effort to look for alternative assessments for that underrepresented, underrepresented population?
Yes, that's part of the AIG plan. And I don't know if you recall from earlier in the year, we presented, it's not a strategy written in the plan, but it's a strategy we want to write in the plan. So we were trying different things this year to see how they panned out, to identify more underrepresented students in our AIG population. That is a concerted effort. I know one of our high schools is working on a program. I don't know if it will be ready for next year, but to, to identify for advanced placement students in underrepresented populations. And so that should be written into the plan. The results of this survey will be used to write more strategies into the plan, which is why the plan will be presented next month instead of this month. Can I answer that? Okay.
One more question. Does the state dictate the criteria on which students are placed, or do we have some flexibility?
We have some flexibility. We have some. And our plan was very, our plan was very stringent into it being based on an EOG percentile. And so that's one of the things we're looking at adding other ways to identify students, because if you would use only that identifier, it's really not, it really doesn't identify students that could benefit from AIG services.
That was exactly the point I wanted to make, is that children are gifted in ways far different from end-of-grade test.
Absolutely. And students who are willing to put the work ethic in, and parents who support that. So we're, we're looking at all of those things. Yes, ma'am.
Any more questions? Tier two, tier three?
Tier two and tier three, you have, we're not going to put that up. That is the quarterly update on data, and you have that link. You had, we've also put in here an overview. It's a separate link on this document of the supports provided thus far this year. And we did our benchmark data in, end of it finalized was in February. Our trend is positive overall, but again, it's a trend. Reading projections are more positive than math, and again, that's, that's a projection. But you can look, we included for you the Formative Data Check from MAP. We also included for you the Lexia, which is reading and Power Up. That's for literacy, and it shows some, some data for you by school. And it also shows you some grade-level analysis by school. And this is just, as I said, an update to add to your data notebook. Are there any questions about that data? I didn't ask Kristy to come, since it was an update.
When you see a persistent trend, and the trend in a particular grade level is not where it should be, what are we offering at the district or the leadership at the school level to help those teachers and to...
What we, what we have done is taken each school, and we still do data team visits, where Academic Innovation Department and Kristy, who is our data expert, go out to the school. And, and it's a very, it's not a, we tell you what to do conversation, but it's a very, very strong team-oriented conversation about, you know, looking at this, how can we help you? What do you need? Our, our team has also done a document of research-based strategies by all the areas that the data is disaggregated by, like economically disadvantaged. What are research-based strategies that work for those kids? Students with disabilities, then ethnicities, because every school has a different target area. And so we, they have pulled that together for them as well, so that they can find research-based strategies that have been proven to be effective with whatever their target population is in both reading and math. It's a start. I mean, it's, it's not perfect, but we work closely with them, and they go out upon request. They go regularly, but then they go additionally upon request by the schools. They can come out and meet with the teacher-staff meeting, small group, whatever.
As we look at this data, what, what is our projection for, our prediction about the number of low-performing schools that we may have?
Now that we've made a prediction, we do not want to increase the number. We certainly want some to not be on the list next year. But we, at this point, all we can say is that the trend is positive, but there's no way to know if the positive trend on the MAP assessment will predict the performance on the end-of-grade test until we actually take that test. We're hopeful that it's going to be better. We focus more on data analysis this year and individual student needs, but we won't know. We can't, I don't think we're trying to predict a trend for that.
Dr. Coats, you know, we've talked about this before, about best practices. When we see some of these, and, and looking at the math data, a lot of our elementary schools have made great strides. Benson Elementary, 9.1%. Obviously not where we want them to be overall with their percentage, but 9.4, 9.1, Cooper, 3.4, Corinth holders E, 5.5, so forth. Are we reaching out to them to see what kind of best practices that they're using to try to go like the South Smithfield and West Clayton Elementary and so forth? Selma E as well had a 5.2% increase. Just seeing what their best practices are, so that we can, you know, duplicate those across the county, as well as in our reading. I mean, we've done some great strides in reading, but have we done that?
I think we will do that when we get standardized assessment data, because this again is MAP data. This is benchmark data. And, and until we get the final assessment data, I don't think we've done any reaching out to other schools on best practices. Now, what our team has done, as far as not, as far as a formal reach out, but what our team has done, when they visit a school, let's say, for example, I'm looking at this Benson Elementary. If they visit Benson Elementary and their math percentage, this is a percentage change from last year. Keep in mind, it's, it's a different group of students too. It's just a little bit different group of students, because this one group has gone out. But, but, and if they're, and if it's the same, when they're analyzing benchmark data, it's the same group of students from the previous benchmark. But at that, at this point in time, it's, it's too early to say, oh, they're nailing it. That could be the topic was easier, it could be a lot of factors influencing. But when they see something that they feel a school is doing that's really on the mark and has made a significant difference, they do share that out, but we're not doing a formal, hey, your data is great, what are you doing? Because it's just too early, because when you looked at the first set of data, remember it wasn't positive. So if we had said then, oh, they're messing up, you know, you just, we just wait and see how it turns out when we do the end-of-grade analysis, when those scores come in in the spring.
Okay, because I guess I was... Okay, because I guess I was, you know, because I was thinking, you know, here we are in April, and we got EOGs coming up. So I was like, you know, we need to be preparing these students right now. And if we're seeing some, even though it's percentages and so-called benchmarks, you know, that's a stride in the right direction, so.
Yes, and what we've worked on is trying to take the data that we had from last year and analyze why we think the performance wasn't where it was. And understanding it's a different, like I said, a different group of students. But you look at, when you analyze that data, you look at, was there a specific area that our school was deficient? Then we need to focus on that. That means we didn't, let's just use, let's say, graphing lines, I'm making something up. And that's not an elementary thing, but let's suppose our data last year showed that we were very weak there. We would obviously turn around and focus on that this year. That's not necessarily a strategic change in what the teachers are doing, it's just a focus shift on what we need to look at for student achievement. And we are doing that. But then when we see final results, if we see a huge change, we're going to say, what did they do that everybody else didn't do? Certainly, keeping in mind that every school's needs are different. Because what a school needs that was targeting, let's say, a population of English language learners, they may have a huge increase in reading, but that, what they did for English language learners might not be research-based strategy for African-Americans if they needed a huge growth. So you have to consider all of those things. But yes, they are looking at everything we can do, that we can share to help students achieve at a higher level. You're welcome.
Dr. Coats, thanks for all your data gathering and persistence on what we asked for, and we'll keep your family in our prayers the rest of the week.
Thank you, please do. I appreciate that very much. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you for having me. It's been with you all day, it's been fun. Good afternoon, Chairman Wooton, Lady Vice Chair, Dr. Peggy Smith, members of the board, Dr. Renfro and Mr. Jim Lawrence. I have four items for you this afternoon. The first item is Board Exhibit 7C1, and this item is for approval. It is according to, it's the Corinth Holders High School Edition. According to the March 1, 2019 update from ORAD, Corinth Holders is 823 students over capacity, projected to grow. Currently, students are housed in 23 mobile units. This addition will provide 24 classrooms, 18 general classrooms, four science classrooms, and two computer labs. Hyde Associates provided the original school design, and preparations have been made for the future addition. Hyde Associates completed the design, and bids were received on March 13 of 2019, and you'll see the bid tabulation is attached. Administration and Operations Department recommends awarding the project to Wimco Corporation out of Washington, North Carolina, for a total contract amount of $5,822,000. This is at the cost of $153 per square foot, which is well under the projected budget for this project, and it also includes accepting all of our bid alternates. Wimco also was the general contractor for the existing school. And so attached is the recommendation from Hyde Associates with the bid tabulation, and we bring this to you today for approval.
I'm excited to bring this opportunity, the Corinth Holder High School Edition Bid Award, to get, clean out the mobile units and put them in a safer facility, but this is an action item, so entertain a motion.
So moved, they're moved.
Motion by Teresa Grant, seconded by Tracy Zukowski. Any questions about the bid?
It's exciting times.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
The next item is Board Exhibit 7C2, South Johnston High School bleacher replacement. A recent assessment was conducted on our visitor bleachers, and the South Johnston High School bleachers are in need of replacement. We followed up with that with a structural engineer to evaluate the condition further in order to deem them not structurally sound, so we do need to replace those. A request for proposals was prepared, a total of six companies were invited to bid, and the project was also advertised in the NNO and the Greater Diversity News. These three bids were received. And the cost in repair of upgrades far exceeds the cost of a complete new system. So we recommend awarding the projects to Gates Concrete and Construction for a total contract amount of $227,685,000. Design and contract administration has been completed in-house on this project, and it will be funded out of the 2018 bond referendum. And we present this to you today for approval. You'll see the bid tabulation is attached.
Also excited to bring before you the South Johnston High School Bleacher Replacement Action Item. Entertain a motion.
A motion.
I like my items, they're fun.
Dr. Smith made the motion.
And second.
Terry Sessons made the second. Any questions about the bleacher replacement? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
The next item is an information item. It is Board Exhibit 7C3. It is safety updates. I'd like to bring to your attention a few of the updates that are on your exhibit sheet. Emergency management plans for the school sites are being reviewed with elementary, middle, and high school counselors at their respective counselor meetings. We have had safety meetings with local agencies and schools in the North Johnston feeder pattern. As you recall, we have one going well in the Clayton feeder pattern, but we're excited to have had, I believe, two meetings with North Johnston. And we're going to begin facilitating these meetings in the Princeton area in May. Security assessments have been completed for all of our sites. We're excited that we have a small grant, which we received for our mobile units, to ensure that they have appropriate signage on the outside for being able to find them. And that is very important, if you've ever been to the back of some of our schools that have many, you know, dozens out in the back, and for law enforcement. And Smithville-Selma High School, we're proud to report, has 61 new cameras, both inside and outside. And as you learned from Mr. Bristow and Brian Baker last month, we have gone into some of the high schools with the intentions of upgrading their exterior cameras, have found out that their camera systems in general just needed a complete overhaul, which has taken them more time. But again, they are doing this work, they're Johnston County folks, and they're proud of what they're doing, and they want to do it right. So they've been coming to me and letting me know that these issues needed to be attended. So that may have slowed them down a little bit on their progress going to the next school, but we have everything where it needs to be when we leave. All of our middle schools will begin to receive upgrades in exterior cameras beginning in August. And our high schools continue to utilize our card system. We started this year, it's gone very well. But we have identified one of our folks on my team, who is now our controlled access specialist. He actually remotely can take things in and out, he can go to the schools and talk directly with folks, and ensure that we have everything where it needs to be, and that's Mr. Ben Barber. And then we finally participated in our statewide tornado drill, and continue to have our quarterly lockdown drills. We are very proud to continue to look at all of our upgrades in safety, and I'm presenting this to you for information.
This is the information. I do have one question, and I don't mean to prolong the five-minute session you got here, but security vestibules-
Yes.
-in all the schools. And I know it's a progress over the cell of bonds, but can you tell me the date on when all the schools will have security vestibule rules?
We actually were ready to take this to you this particular month, but when we do a bid, we have to have, the first time, we're hoping to get three people to come to the table to bid the project. We only had one. We had to do a rebid of the project. We'll open bids for that tomorrow. And after that, I'll bring to you in May, who we'd like to reward it to, our lowest bidder. After that, we'll then sit down with the person who has the project to begin to put a schedule in place. We're going to probably need to start with the schools this summer who have masonry work to do, those schools that are not the models, that are not the easiest. First thing, a lot of glass is going to be involved in the ones in the model schools. And we're very excited, we actually put in that specification that we're actually using a, it's not what you call bulletproof, but almost bulletproof glass, first time, that Mr. Hyde has used that, and we are very excited to be one of the first districts to put that in. So it's put in as an alternate, hoping we can have that in our budget. So we are moving forward, gaining speed.
And just for update for our stakeholders out there, the vestibules force visitors to go to, forces them to go through the office before they can get into the school grade.
And then once they get to that wall, those glass, that glass product, again, is another layer of reinforcement that we're very excited about.
Good, thank you.
Some schools are easier than others today.
I just got a comment about the safety. I sat in on the final meeting yesterday at North Johnston High School, and when it came in, Mr. Farrell and everybody that put that on, and it was very enlightening to me as far as what they've done over the past couple of months, and just seeing the other, the EMS and first responders, fire departments. We had Clayton SRO there with Ms. Jones. So it's an awesome thing. I mean, unfortunately, we happen to talk about these things, but it's very exciting to know that our district has taken this as one of the big pledges to make sure that everybody's safe this on our campuses, as well as anything that could happen. And just talking to some of the EMS, or excuse me, fire departments after the meeting, they would like to be present or be invited to when they have fire drills on campuses. And one of the main reasons is, is the direct routes of how they may bring in their trucks may be where we're staging kids. And they need to know that upfront. So I was, that was awesome to hear, that they want to be that involved to make sure that they can get them, get everybody safe as quickly as possible. So thank you for what you're doing, and Mr. Farrell for putting that on and going across the county.
Goodness to Mr. Farrell, I'm so proud to have him in my department as our safety officer. He does a tremendous job and takes it seriously.
Question, I have not seen the design. These doors do open, so that when we have a PTA meeting, they're not having to all funnel through the office.
They absolutely do.
And my second question is, you said some schools were easier than others, and I happen to know of one that might be a little more difficult. When the ceiling goes as high as the ceiling in East Clayton-
Right.
-or Clayton Middle or Four Oaks, those are not going to be all the way to the ceiling, am I correct? They're just the-
I actually believe they are. It'll be completely glassed in.
All right, then, thank you. Thank you.
We do have the designs over with us at facilities. Our principals have seen all their individual designs. If you need to look at those, let me know, I'll bring them to you, and you can take a look at what they're going to look like. Very excited.
Bus survey results.
Right. My final item is Board Exhibit 7C4, classified bus survey results. In March of 2019, a survey was sent to all of our classified staff members in order to gain input from the employees regarding bus driving duties that are required of these employees. The survey was provided confidentially, and responses were compiled and analyzed. I'm presenting to you today the data, which has been disaggregated by region and by position. Johnston County Schools needs 850 drivers a day, and there are only over 1,200 runs needed per day. The summary data stated that 328 of the staff that responded said they would like to continue to drive, they're currently driving. 67 staff members responded they'd like to become a full-time driver if that was offered to them. And currently, we employ 75 full-time drivers already. These numbers, however, still put us short 470 drivers per day. The good news is, the survey yielded a response rate of 82%, so we do feel we have a good set of data for us to begin to make inroads in looking at this. Our next step is to dig deeper into this data, to look and match up what schools said I want to continue to drive, where we can make more full-time routes, and that is certainly something I know you all are taking an in-depth look at. And then, looking at ways that we can continue to work with our employees who are wanting to drive, such as custodians, who are doing the duties of both cleaning the schools, needing to drive, and then being put in the position of needing to come back and finish that work, which is currently, has been a struggle. So I know through some budget considerations, you are all looking in depthly at that. This survey really sends a clear message that we are investigating this issue, wanting to see what steps we can take as we move forward in the future. So I present this to you for information, any questions that you have.
Well, first of all, thank you. This arose in our policy committee, because we know that we are missing out on some very talented people who would like to be instructional assistants in our school, but don't want to drive a bus. And so we're missing out on their expertise. But the other concern is, is that when those teacher assistants who are on buses, they're not in the classroom, and so they're not able to do the kinds of things that we need for them to do to help our children be successful academically.
Absolutely. Any other questions?
I just want, go ahead.
I just want to thank all those who responded to the survey. You rarely get 80-plus percent response on a survey, and we can't make good decisions without good data. So thank you all for doing it, and for all those that responded.
And if there are any other surveys, or feel like they did not get to see the survey for whatever reason, they can certainly reach out to my department, and we will issue them one as well to make sure their voice is heard.
I wanted to echo that appreciation too. It may not work as we ideally would like it to, but the fact that you all have gathered the data, and this has been going on, we started looking at this when you all were first elected, so three or four months. And that really is a credit to your department, that they would hand-collate all of these. This was not an electronic survey, because we wanted to make sure that every school was accountable for putting their surveys out there. So again, great thanks to all of you for really putting this effort into it, and I promise, we'll make the best decision we're able to make based on these data.
Yeah, in addition to that, I just want to add that I want everyone to know that our classified staff are incredibly important to each one of us. And we're hearing you, and we are working hard, and we may not turn things around like right now or beginning of next school year, but we're making a step in the right direction. So with this information, again, we'll be able to make it work for everyone. So thank you.
I think it's, I think this is just showing how this board does listen to everyone, and we are certainly taking this into consideration. We all have personal ties to different TAs, different classified staff, but there's a young lady that comes up to me every night when I work an extra-duty assignment and says, when are you going to do something about these bus drivers? They need help. And, you know, everyone from a waitress at a restaurant who knows someone and cares about someone, to my coworkers who have spouses, I mean, this is relayed to me on a very steady basis, as it is to the other six people on this board. But I just think this shows proof that this board does listen to people. And when you have a concern, that's certainly a concern of ours, and we take the time to look into it.
Well, and I also want to make clear that we wanted to leave the option open for those teacher assistants who still want to drive a bus, because we, as you can see from the responses, we have quite a few that, either because of the additional income or whatever, that if that's something that they want to continue to do, we don't want them to feel like that we're jeopardizing that for them, that that option would still be open.
Any more questions?
And again, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gill, it's record time.
Anything else that I can answer?
Appreciate your hard work, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening again. Three items for you. Two are action items, one is information. The first is Board Exhibit 7D1. This is the 2019-2020 calendar proposal for Early College Academy and Career and Technical Leadership Academy. As you know, these two schools have a waiver from the current calendar restrictions. This waiver allows these two schools to begin and end on dates different than required by law. The purpose of the waiver is to better align these schools with the community calendars. And this alignment is necessary due to students taking both high school and community college courses. So the administration at these schools, they have certainly worked with their staffs to present this calendar to the superintendent, which in turn, we are presenting to you for your consideration and approval today.
This is an action item for 2019-20 calendar for ECA and CTLA. Entertain a motion. Motion by Ronald Johnson, seconded by Tracy Zukowski. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The second item, also an action item, Board Exhibit Number 7D2. This is the 2019-2020 calendar proposal for restart schools. As you know, we've had several restart schools who have requested a different calendar. And last year was our first year where the feeder patterns had requested to follow those calendars so that parents who have children at multiple levels, that they could all be on a similar calendar, which means that they would be able to participate in events as an entire family and one would not be in school while one is in school. And so these schools have talked with their staffs and community and have presented a proposal to our superintendent, which in turn we're presenting to you for your consideration and approval.
And this is all the restart schools that came together and came up with this calendar?
Yes, ma'am.
So North and Benson, Cooper, all came together and said this is what they wanted?
Correct.
Entertain a motion for 19-20 calendar for restart schools. We'll ask questions. Entertain a motion. No motion. Well, let's get in a motion first. Motion by Ronald Johnson, second by Tracy Zukowski. Any questions?
Yes, I got a few. Is there any way, reason, and I've got some documentation for this, that we can't just combine our restart calendar and our traditional calendar? The reason I ask that, I did some research. 215 days for a restart school, 215 days for our traditional, 24 workdays for restart, 20 workdays for traditional, three early release days for traditional. The restart has 170 student days. Traditional has 171. Both of them have 21 holidays. I'm sorry. Four. Okay. Maybe I missed that.
Okay.
And then the other thing is there's, and I've talked to some teachers in some restart schools, and there's three different months that they have two workdays back-to-back, October, February, and March, which really they don't seem to need that amount of time, two days back-to-back in the restart. So the reason I'm really asking, can we have one calendar for all, is because we have other parents that work in a different feeder pattern than their students go to that may not be on a restart calendar, that may offset some time for daycare or whatever it may be, after-school items. So just comparing the calendars, I see a lot of differences in it. So is there's any reason why we could not go to that?
I was just comparing, going back and forth, there's not really a whole bunch of differences other than the one or two extra workdays that you were talking about. They're kind of the same almost.
And this means the North Benson, I'm sorry, North Johnston, South Johnston, and Clayton would all be on these calendars. So that leaves Princeton and Smithville-Selma.
Not Clayton.
Five feeder. Oh, that's right, Selma. So tell me who, tell me who would be on this.
Clayton.
Cooper's in Clayton area?
Well, but not the entire, not the entire Clayton schools. So you do have Cooper. You have North Johnston.
It's not the whole feeder pattern?
Feeder pattern is the Triple S feeder pattern and the South Johnston feeder pattern.
North is not-
Excuse me, North feeder pattern.
So who, again?
The South Johnston feeder pattern, the Triple S feeder pattern, the North Johnston feeder pattern, and then you have Cooper Academy as well that joins in that calendar.
Three of our seven high schools would be on this calendar. Feeder pattern. The hours don't come into this calendar. These are just days when they will either be in school all day or part of a day, correct?
No, we're looking at hours. Our academic innovation team, they do look at hours.
And that would be one thing, Mr. Sutton, valid points, what you and Ms. Zukowski have offered. The restart principles have gone back in and their student day may be longer. So the days may be similar between the traditional calendar and restart calendar, but they have more time built into their days than traditional calendars would.
Do we know what those start and end times are?
I've been trying to get that for you since you mentioned a little earlier, but I hadn't gotten it yet. So I apologize.
Okay. And then the other thing is, I guess when restart calendar, restart was being, you know, promoted out to some of these areas, flexibility of the calendar was one of them.
Correct.
And, you know, I'm just going to voice for some of the teachers that have questioned since they saw this calendar is the week of Thanksgiving, they had off this year. And so this year in this calendar, it seems like it's following the traditional calendar for the holiday and the two days after that. So is there any particular reason for that?
Well, I will say that an initial draft that was submitted to us, they did have time before Thanksgiving as it was this year. But we've had discussion with those schools and shared with them the concerns that we have received. And that was a tweak that we made to this before presenting it to you this afternoon.
So just to clarify from my head, with the flexibility of the calendars, it could be either days or time and end starts is what we're talking about with the flexibility. And if the two calendars are pretty much the same, we're not taking away their flexibility to start and end school.
So Cooper would be able to continue their four and a half? Good. Okay, that is my concern, that they still have flexibility.
And keeping it on the same, if we keep it on the same calendar, it's going to reduce the confusion that's going across the county when you get Facebook messages, is Cooper open today? Is Johnston County Schools on a half-day? Who's doing what? Who's going to school? Who's not going to school?
Now, just to make sure we're clear, Dr. Smith, I'm not sure that if Cooper follows this calendar, that they would continue with the longer Monday through Thursday, shorter day on Friday.
No, well, the charge from the board at that time and superintendent was, we have too many calendars. Six calendars, seven calendars, too many. We need to narrow down and have fewer calendars as we head into next year. And so what I challenged our principals to do was, we need three calendars next year. We need a traditional calendar, we need a early college, CTLA calendar, and we need one restart calendar. And so those folks who are the six restart schools have worked to have one calendar. Now, is this a major deviation for Cooper Academy? Yes, ma'am. And in my conversations with Ms. Flores, you know, she has said, if you, Dr. Renfro, say we need to be on a restart calendar, we will do what our other restart schools are doing, but we would prefer not to. So she has duly noted that they like what they're doing in terms of longer days, Monday through Thursday, and getting out early on Friday for staff development. But my charge to Ms. Flores, as it was her five peers who are restarts, we need one restart calendar next year.
And not to belabor the point, but I see the calendar being the same, the hours you just said were flexible. So I don't have a problem with them having flexible hours because they're still in school on the same calendar as our feeder pattern.
I guess, you know, simple is better. And I just think that if we really not are honing in on their start and end times, and this is not what we're voting on here, hours in the flex, in the restart come into play, I truly feel we're doing an injustice to some of our teachers and staff across this county that work in a different feeder pattern than what their children go to. Because I can't tell you how many times you get on social media and some schools are putting, oh, remember, we don't have school tomorrow. And then you're seeing some students, some parents having to respond and everything. So it's a lot of confusion going on. And if we really just hone in on one calendar and, you know, let's face it, we've talked about this before in here, that some of our other feeder patterns that don't have restart schools, they have a long day as well. And I just feel that if one, if it's, if the calendar for one is good, then why not we try to figure it out and work it the same way, have one calendar for the whole county outside of our early college and CTLA? It would make it a lot more simpler for all of our stakeholders, especially if they work in a different feeder pattern that, you know, their kid has a restart feeder, a restart calendar.
And I know the restart principals are not up here, and if I could hear them, they'd probably say, Mr. Vertrano, please remember to say this or that. But I do know that the additional professional development days that you're seeing in this calendar, as opposed to the traditional, they would likely argue that these are days that are set aside, concentrated for additional professional development, that they have identified for these particular schools.
Yes.
So I just want to make sure I've noticed that on their behalf.
I've spoken with several of those restart principals, and that these full days of professional development are very important to them. They're not, they don't feel like that they're as effective by trying to do it on an early release day. Because by the time you get students dismissed, the buses, you've gone to check your mailbox, and then you go to the media center for PD, you know, it's 2:00. And so the restart principals that I've spoken with were very adamant about that they want these full days for professional development, that it not revert back to an early release time for them.
But I've also talked to Cooper and parents as well as administration, and they're very committed to their four and a half. And I don't want to take that flexibility. If the law provides for flexibility, I want to give maximum flexibility. And so I would, I would hope that we could come to an agreement about 215 days. But if, as Dr. Renfro said, hour start and end times were their call, I'm forgiving them that flexibility.
Let me, and I hear you loud and clear, Ms. Sessoms and Dr. Smith, let me just throw this out here. If it's great PD days for our restart schools, why not offer that to our traditional schools for the additional PD as well? And give them the opportunity to have those full days of PD as well.
Well, I guess my response to that would be, the schools that are on the traditional calendar, if what I hear you saying is, we would want all the, all the schools to follow the proposed calendar that's in front of us, then they would in essence have to go back and look at their day and possibly extend it. And those are conversations that they haven't had yet. Whereas these schools have come together and said, we're willing to extend our day in order to allow, afford for these additional professional development days. So it's just, and again, if, want to think back to all the work that went in for that traditional calendar, the surveys, the calendar committee, and I just want to share with you, remind us of all the effort that went into creating that calendar.
And that calendar was, that calendar was voted on by the public. You did a survey of three different calendars, so it was not just the calendar committee that approved it.
Correct.
Yeah, that recommended that, and we approved.
Correct.
What is it about this calendar that would not allow Cooper to still have the flexible hours?
Well, and if I misunderstood the directive from the board, we said that there were too many calendars and we needed to narrow it down. You know, Cooper was an early adopter, a pioneer, a rocket, but a pioneer. And they jumped out there and said, we want to do something with our daily calendar. So as we have navigated this fall and spring, and you guys telling me, as Ms. Zukowski had said, you know, you wake up in the morning and I guess on social media, do we have school today or do we not have school today? Is it a full day? Is it an early release day? And so there is a strong sentiment out there that we needed to have fewer calendars for fewer confusion. And so my directive to the restart principals was, come up with one calendar that meets all your needs. And they have worked to do that. Again, each of them giving up some autonomy on their own calendar so that they could come up with one that was a restart calendar, which was my directive to them, fewer calendars next year. If Ms. Flores was here today and her staff, they would say, if you'll give us autonomy, we want to keep our calendar because we think it is serving our teachers and students in good fashion.
I, you know, I'm whatsoever better for the whole board, obviously. But correct me if I'm wrong on, you know, we're talking about times of start and end times. And we've got some restart high schools are in that feeder pattern, Triple S and South Johnston, 7:15 take-in and 2:00 dismissal. And then we have, I believe Clayton is on that same timeframe as well. So we've got two different, you know, we've got some in that restart feeder, and they're on the same schedule. So I guess from the, from the amount of time, if they're on the, if they're on that calendar, and then they got a traditional high school, Clayton is not in that feeder pattern, restart schedule, they got the same amount of time, but they're, they're in school different times as far as they get extra days off in that feeder pattern.
Dr. Renfro?
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm still trying to understand. So if we adopted this calendar, why would that limit Cooper's flexibility with their hours? Not the days, but the hours?
If you direct us to, it won't. And Cooper can keep their calendar and schedule just like they have in the past. I was trying to, because technically, technically, that early release day on Friday is what people view as a difference in calendars. But great point on your part, the days are the same, it's just the times that are different. And so as long as we all agree at this table that that would encompass Cooper, for them to have that calendar flexibility, then yes, ma'am. It would not impede what they're attempting to do.
Yeah, I mean, I can definitely see that. I mean, you can't say personalization on this side and then uniformity on this side. You know, that's something that is just inconsistent. And I get consistency, but every community in this county has different needs, different values, and different way they want to do things. And if it works and they can get results, that's number one. If you're getting results, then by all means, do it your way.
If we can keep the calendar, everybody goes to school on the same day and go home on the same day, but they do what they want with the hours. Might be early, might be late. Right. Then, then I think we can all go along with this.
And as late as Friday night at the Clayton High School play, I had a parent come up to me and say, you're not going to take our Monday and Tuesday at Thanksgiving away, are you? And I said, you know, we have to make the decision on the, on the Thanksgiving. And that was something that they definitely gave up because they loved that week. And that's a sacrifice. And I would hate to ask them to give up their other flexibility when we've taken off their two Thanksgiving days. And they are, it is meaningful professional development. It is professional learning communities. I think they are making maximum use of those afternoons. Parents love it. I talked to parents and they said, yeah, we like it because if I want to go on a trip, I don't have to take my child out of school. I just leave when I want to leave. So I'm for the day calendar, but I'm not for dictating their hours.
And I think as we move forward, looking at next year, you know, that that may, what Mr. Sutton has brought up, is, would certainly be an item for conversation for the calendar committee, you know, to take a look at the restart calendar from this year, and would they, would the traditional schools benefit from the same calendar as we move forward in planning for the next calendar?
Yeah, I totally agree. Because my whole point is, like everybody's saying up here, is we adopt a calendar and let the school, schools adopt their, you know, when they go to school and when they dismissed, because like I said earlier, we've got three or four, if not five, high schools on that same calendar, or same time. But yet some of them are in the restart calendar and the rest of them are not in that calendar. So it's like, if it's, we need to make it equal for all.
Ms. Sessoms made a good point. Mr. Sutton, you and I had mentioned earlier, as we go through next year's calendar process, restart folks need to be on-
restart folks need to be on our traditional calendar committee. And maybe the charge is, there's one calendar going into that calendar committee effort next year. But I serve at the leisure of the board, and whatever you direct us to do, we'll do today on this.
Correct.
And flexibility of hours being the reset piece.
And one, one thing to remember that has not been mentioned, let's not underestimate how transportation affects the, the daily calendar. As much as we'd like to be consistent, and everybody start and stop at the same time, our multi-tiered bus system will not permit that to happen. So I do think it's pertinent to, to mention that as well.
And Dr. Renfro, if I can add, and I'm just reiterating something that we've discussed previously, that I just want to remind the board, the more days built into a school calendar, because we can look at time, the, the law allows us to look at days or instructional hours, and we can look at instructional hours, having more days built into your calendar allows children to be in school more and get fed more days. And that's an important part as well. So every less day built into a calendar is a possible day a child may go without a meal. So I just want to, I know you all are aware of that, but I like to remind us of that as well.
We've got a motion on the table, first and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. The last item I have is an information item, Board Exhibit Number 7D3. This is certified personnel turnover data. If you recall, at the last meeting, I shared with you attrition, an attrition report, which was based on data that we submitted to D P I and was approved at the state level. All L E As have to do that. And after some dialogue, I believe this board had asked, what does that look like per school? And so in the information that's been provided to you today, you have trend data, five-year trend data. Now, all this obviously is turnover data that was approved by the state, but you can see it, we have it broken down by elementary level, middle school level, high school level. And then the additional information that was requested, the state doesn't track this, but the question was, what might turnover data look like for our departments? And so that last page is departmental information, and it's not percentages, because percentages could be a little bit deceiving. For example, because this is certified information, if you have a smaller department, and there are only two individuals who are considered certified, if one of them left, and you put 50%, it looks like a tremendous percentage, but you're only talking about one person who left. So you have the actual numbers on that last page for departments, as opposed to the percentages for the schools. So this is just permitted for, just presented rather, as information for you today, as a follow-up to last month's information.
Okay. Thank you so much for pulling all this together. So when we look at the certified turnover data for the departments, this means, these are people who have actually left our school system, or did they move to another position within the school system?
Both. So the numbers on this page, on the last page that you have, if, for example, if it says two, that means two individuals who were in that department are no longer in that department, or left that department within that school year. One of them, one of the two could still be in our school system, they're just in another department, or could be in a school. One of them could have retired. One of them could have resigned and transitioned to another L E A or another state.
All right. So I am very concerned about the academic innovation department. This shows that 23 left so far during this school year? Is that correct?
So this goes from July 1, and so any, any changes July 1 forward would be represented, would be included in, in this number.
Okay. And then we lost 27 in that department last school year, so are we looking at 50 people?
When you say, are you looking at 50 people?
Yeah, 23 so far this school year, and then 27 last year?
Yes, ma'am. Now, that is a, and the other thing to keep in mind when you're showing numbers versus percentages, academic innovation is, when you're talking about certified staff, is, is one of the larger departments that we have. But that's, that's why the trend date is there as well for you to, to see. But yes, the last two years, there've been a, a larger number. I think that's what you're referencing, as compared to the three years before.
How many people are in that department, total?
I think if you're looking at the certified staff, I would say around, is it 60 to 70? Dr. Coats, I know I'm putting you on the spot, but.
Probably fifty, I would say a lot, fifty-ish.
Fifty-ish? Okay.
So between the last two years, you've almost had a complete turnover, or no?
Well, Nick, I'm on this list, I changed jobs last year and this year. That would include preschool, the A S A partner, and academic, all of that's under.
Correct. So psychologists are on there. I think this year, we had three, three of our principals were in academic innovation last year. In July 1, they started in a principalship, so they were there last year, not there this year. And so that, there's a lot that could go into these numbers.
Sure, I'm sorry.
So with that grade of a, a move, whether they stayed in the system or they went out of the system, it would probably be beneficial for all of us to see if they moved to a different position within our county? Like if they went from there to become a principal? And if they didn't stay with our county, why?
Right. So for the 1819 school year, there's 23 on the page that you have. Fifteen of those are not with the school system. So that could be retirement, could be a position in another L E A. The year before, out of the 27, 16 are no longer with the school system. And again, that could be retirements. And that does include other individuals as well. Like we said, psychologists fall under academic innovation, they're on the organizations.
But just to reiterate, because I just want to be sure I'm comprehending this correctly, you have a department in academic innovation that employees, or encompasses 60 to 70 employees. And out of those 60 and 70, we have lost 50, whether it be to transfers, termination, voluntary leave, whatever, we've lost 50 out of the 70 people that were in that department. Is that incorrect? Because I, I may be missing it.
No, the data's there. It's 27, 27 for 1718, 23 for 1819.
Okay, and the.
Right. Okay, but if 17 left us, that's still high. That's, that's still a.
Still high.
Mm-hmm.
And it's one of our most important departments.
And it doesn't matter if they're leaving us or transferring, you have change, and you have a lack of consistency, regardless of who you are. And I don't care if it's a school system, police department, or Jiffy Lube, if you have a complete, almost a complete turnover of a department, that is unhealthy.
It's unhealthy culture.
It's very unhealthy. I mean, it's not, you have to have some type of stability to progress, and this is extremely unfortunate. And I did not realize the numbers were as high.
The, the other thing is, exit interviews on the ones that are no longer with us, any particular trend as to why they may leave the school system? And if they left the school system, are they leaving to go to another school system surrounding us?
There've been, there've been a few, I, I, excuse me, I don't have the specific numbers on that, as far as exactly how many may have gone to another. I did break it down as far as, like I said, out of the 2315 are not with us anymore, could have retired, resigned in the year before. But as far as how many went to this county versus that county, that would require more research. I'm not sure we've seen.
It would be interesting to have that data, because I'd, I'd like to know who is still in the system, and how many are outside of the system.
Right. We'll do our best to find it. Individuals, when they leave us, they're not required to share with us where they're going. And in fact, it's up to them, the choice that they choose to identify, if they complete one of our forms, sometimes we just get a letter. But we do have a form that we ask them to identify reasons as to why they are leaving. And they can choose those reasons, or they can just put other, and sometimes we're not.
But we should know, we should know the ones that are still in my system, is what I'm.
To the best of our ability, and try to come back with additional information.
And, and I'm just going to say that, to piggyback off of what Mr. Johnson said, you know, regardless of, of why or who, this is an unstable situation, and we're, I mean, we're not able to provide our schools with consistent support if we've got this kind of turnover within the department that's supposed to be supporting our schools with curriculum, and resources, and guidance in terms of instruction. You know, this may be part, part of the issue in terms of our testing data, our results.
And we hired Caroline Lang, but that shows up as two transitions.
If they're still in the, if they're still under academic innovation, it would only count as one.
So Caroline Lang, taking that position would not be in here.
It would not.
And that's fine. I think what we're asking is to, to find out the difference between who's still in our system, where do they go, and who actually left our county? Because it is such an important department, that we've really got, that culture's got to be super strong to make our students and teachers successful.
I'll be glad to, to give you that information. I, I do know just from pulling the information and working with the team, looking at organizations, because this is, we actually had to pull organizations, identify the people, pull next year's organization, the following year's organizations, were they still there? If they're not there, where are they? And we had to, to research that, but we'd be glad to research it further. But I do know going through that, there were several who retired. But certainly not all. I don't want to give you the perception that all retired, but there were some who, they reached the end of their career, and they, they decided to retire.
Thank you for this. It's eye-opening, because we're sitting around here and scratching our heads on, on, on data and everything else, and how we can assist and all that, and we hear consistency across the county that's not there. And communication is disconnected, or three or four different things are being communicated. This right here may be the core of some of those main items, what Mr. Johnson and Ms. Sessoms talked about. I mean, this, this would give you a stomach acid, because, I mean, honestly, this is where the rubber meets the road, where we can take it from the county office and deliver it to our schools for curriculum and, and a lot of other things. And we've got a major turnover.
Well, and as a leader, I would look at this and say, why? What, you know, what is it that we need to be doing to stabilize this situation? And, and whatever it is, whatever it takes to fix that.
Ms. Sessoms, I agree 100%. And I know that we have talked about, Dr. Coats headed over to the Glenn Building and heading up that effort, and know that she's the right lady for the job. And we want to provide stability, support, a climate and a culture where those folks enjoy getting up and going to work every day. But I think what you all have touched on is providing the best service possible to each of our schools, to all of our teachers and all of our students. And so, you know, she's the lady for the job, and we appreciate her willingness to change offices one more time and, and handle that. So we are moving in that direction.
Dr. Coats, how long have you been in your current position? I'm having trouble recalling the exact time. Okay, so you, these 50 people didn't leave yesterday. We know that, and we realize we've said a lot, but we're counting on you, and we have complete faith in you. You're extremely competent, head and shoulders above many people, so you've got a job ahead of you, and we're really counting on you. Thank you for everything you do, Doc.
Absolutely.
But I'll be glad to get that information to you. I know some of them were retirements. I know even, even within our team, last year, we had one to retire, the year before, we had another one to retire. We would have loved for them to have stayed, but they, they reached the end of their career, and they were ready for their, their next journey. So we supported them while they were looking forward to adventures ahead, but.
Mr. Vertrano, just looking at one more, the Johnston County C T E at almost 67%? What is?
Well, again, the, the disadvantage of having a percentage is if you have a small staff, and a few of them leave, you have a very high percentage.
How many staff and how many left?
This is C T L A, Career and Tech. I can get that for you, but that's going to be a very small staff.
And, and if I'm thinking right, too, that we moved from the Clayton High School campus over to J C C campus, and that probably played a lot into whether or not the teachers wanted to travel that far, stay closer to home.
There are certainly things just like that, that play into some of these percentages that help tell the story.
I just appreciate you bringing all this to us.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Vertrano.
Thank you.
Appreciate the information.
Any other questions?
Yeah, we're not shooting the messenger.
Oh, I know that. I know that.
Dr. Coats, if you don't mind coming up in the essence of time, the Johnston County Education Summit has been, been very patient. So I'm going to skip Section E and go straight to Section 8 for public comments. Mr. Reverend Robert O'Neill III can share with us a little bit.
Okay, and I am very happy to share a brief bio for Dr. O'Neill, affectionately known as Bob, to those who know him. Dr. O'Neill has a passion for the Johnston County Public School System. He was among the first generation of school integration 50 years ago in Johnston County, and I'm old, I remember that, and has a vigorous history with the Johnston County School Board and the Johnston County Commission in promoting the causes of Corinth holder school, and advocating for African-American representation on the Johnston County School Board in the 1990s. He was appointed a four-year term as Commissioner of Human Relations for North Carolina under Governor Pat McCrory in 2015. He is the past president of the Johnston County Citizen Association, and a past president of the Corinth Holder School Advisory Council. He currently serves as senior pastor of O'Neill Revival Tabernacle, a non-denom, a non-denomination church founded by his father, the late Bishop Robert O'Neill, Senior. Dr. O'Neill attended Shaw University in 1973, and N C State University in 1987. He returned to school to earn a cum laude B S in religion in 2011, and his Master of Arts in Religion in 2013 from Liberty University, Lynchburg, Virginia. He received his Master of Divinity in 2014, and his Doctor of Ministries in 2019 from Liberty School of Divinity, also in Lynchburg, Virginia. He is a member of the American Association of Christian Counselors, and currently resides with his wife, Deborah, in Zebulon, North Carolina, and they are the parents of five grown children and 11 grandchildren, probably your most proud accomplishment. So at this time, we will welcome Dr. O'Neill to the podium.
Thank you. Dr. O'Neill, welcome, sir.
Thank you. The last time I saw clocks around my lectern, I could not determine if they were looking at me or the clock. So we don't have them anymore. I want to say that I'm very passionate about education, and I always tell my people that we can get education, because if you do, you earn the right to be heard, and the right to be taken seriously. The Honorable Chairman of the Johnston County Board of Education, Mike Wooten, distinguished board members, and. board members, and Dr. Renfro, thank you for setting aside this moment for me to address a very urgent concern. The apparent and disturbing marginalization of African-American professionals in the Johnston County School System. Good evening, I'm Robert O'Neill and I'm a member of the Johnston County Education Summit. As you know, the summit is an informal think tank focused on student development and education in Johnston County. Its members include business and civic leaders, including two past members of the Johnston County Board of Education and other colleagues of mine in the clergy. The summit has met with Chairman Mike Wooten, also Superintendent Renfro, and just recently, Board Member Ronald Johnson, to discuss online, ongoing marginalization of African-American leaders in the superintendent's administration and the appalling lack of diversity. Further, we find disturbing that the ongoing marginalization of African-Americans, professionals in our Johnston County School System not only places little value on African-American professionals, but undermines any effort to achieve diversity in the superintendent's cabinet, its administration, and among traditional high school principals. Now, while there are numerous examples of marginalization of African-American professionals in the Johnston County School System, there is none more apparent and disheartening, ironically, than those found at the superintendent's human capital department, which houses diversity and recruitment. You see, before the only American, African-American in the department became the number one, one, number two person in the recruitment and diversity development section, she was one of the most celebrated principals at a Johnston County Elementary School. At the apex of a stellar career as an accomplished principal, a recognized leader in our community, she was marginalized and given a lower profile, a position in a subordinate role. Now, no matter the justification one attempts to offer, whether it's justifiable or whether it's, it's intentional or unintentional, we feel that it's exactly what it is. It was marginalization of another African-American leader in our school system. Now, the summit, we respectfully seek to share more narratives like this one so you may have a full appreciation of the marginalization of African-American professionals that is occurring under this administration. Let me give you some statistics. First, the summit recognizes that there is only one. Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. There is only one African-American on the superintendent's cabinet. This is wholly insufficient. We can do better. Second, the summit counts zero, zero principals in the high school among the traditional schools. What a shame this brings to our system. Again, we can do better. Third point, the summit notes that only four, only four African-Americans currently serve in the superintendent's 84-member administration. I don't know whether you count me slow or what, or whatever, but when I do my math here, that is not 1%. That is not even a half percent. And I just want to know, and you know, this is rhetorical, of course, can you truly imagine how disappointing this is to African-American citizens and students in Johnston County? What does the administration think of us? Nothing? I'm sorry. I, I don't have a poker face, they've told me, and I'm trying to smile. I said all that to say this, the summit believes that there cannot be a real commitment to preparing our students for global engagement when the system fails to value the contributions of our African-American professionals. We can do better. Now, I know Mr. Hawley submitted an overview of this same message last month, and you may say, like Joe Biden said, to the Me Too movement, I get it, I get it, I get it. But as soon as he walked out among the news cameras, he made light of it. I just want to say the bird is in your hands. You hold the power of life and death. And I want to know, will you crush it? Will you crush the dreams of our little black boys and girls? Or will you release it to inspire and to aspire for excellence? I hope we can have more of this dialogue in the future. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it, Reverend O'Neill, and I, I respect your comments. And as a board of education, I can assure you that we will stay engaged with the Johnston County Education Summit. And matter of fact, we've already engaged the superintendent to reach out to the summit for, to share data and show you where we are and where we want to go. And I look forward to future conversation with the summit. So I appreciate all of it, what you're, what you're doing, and I, I promise you, we will respond. Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, you got any comments?
We appreciate and welcome the, the dialogue. Our time together is pertinent because we know that this is an issue and our pledge is just as strong today as it was when we first talked, sir. Thank you.
Ms. Crystal Roberts, welcome back to the podium.
The communication update, I understand in the interest of time, I would ask if you have any questions. You do have a PowerPoint there and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have about our communications program and practices here in the district.
Any questions at all? We do appreciate the information submitted.
I bring to your attention your news coverage summary as well as the save the date listing. Just want to reiterate that our news coverage usually spans about 100 articles at least per month. We have lots and lots going on in this district and so much to be proud of. We cover that, our stories within and without the classroom with enthusiasm and continue to share the story of the Johnston County Public Schools with results. I do want to share with you the save the date and bring to your attention on page three, because I want to make sure that you have correct dates. But there is a listing of April 15th as the digital cultural exploration presentations. And I just found out today that that has been postponed. So I didn't want you to put that on your calendars. I know how busy you are. And without further ado, I'd like to invite Dr. Amanda Allen, who serves as our Director of Social and Emotional Learning under the Communication and Engagement umbrella. And she will bring you, as requested, an update on our dropout prevention efforts. Thank you, Dr. Allen.
Welcome, Dr. Allen.
Thank you. It's good to be here. So the data that you're about to look at, I just want to make sure that you know exactly what you're going to be looking at. You're going to see a snapshot of where we were as of March 20th of this year. And our dropout data fluctuates daily. So it's, it's very different today than it was at this point. And it's being compared to March 20th of 2018 because a point in time in Power School changes. Like if I were to run data for March 20th of 2018 right now, it would not be the same numbers that you're going to see because if we pulled those kids back in, they would no longer show as a dropout from last year. So just a little logistical thing. I've got the definition of a dropout up here. I wanted to emphasize that when we're looking at dropouts that will count for this school year, we're not going to be able to calculate that until after the 20th day of school next year because we're able to pull these students back in, all the students that are in these numbers tonight and all the students that we might not have start with us the first day of school next year. They can all be pulled back in before the 20th day. So I have in this slide, you've got what our end of year data looked like for the 2017-18 school year. And then you've got in the middle, comparison of March of 2018 to March of 2019. And over to the right, hopefully to ease reference, you've got a change and I've got the positives, they're actually not positives because it's an increase in, in number of students. So they're red. And then we've got zero across the board for early college and CTLA, and we have a decrease for South Johnston. Then we've got our data by school and, and that's the same information you just saw on the last slide. And I just wanted to give it to you in a, a different visual manner for, just to support you digesting that. When you look at this data by grade level, and when I give you the report out on this after the 20th day of next year, you're going to have a lot more data than just by grade. But all of that information, since it's fluctuating so much, it takes a great deal of time to compile the other pieces. But this one, we can quickly look at from both years in comparison. And we've got, usually we have an increase in our 10th grade year and we've got an increase here as well. And, and in talking to some of the dropout, the student advocates and the counselors, they helped to shed light on the fact that 10th grade is usually when you turn 16 and that's the first time that you can make the decision to drop out if that's what you're choosing to do. This is also a more stringent year to pass versus being a freshman in terms of what the requirements are to move on to the 11th grade. So we sometimes have more retentions in the 10th grade than we would in any, any other grade, and that can also account for some of the bottlenecking effect that we have there.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Student advocates.
Yes, sir.
Is it a student advocate per feeder pattern or, okay. So they would handle pretty much all, I mean, how many schools do they cover as far as the average student advocate?
That's a great question. So student advocates are school employees within their school buildings. And our eight main high schools all have their own student advocate. Their day-to-day roles look very different depending on their school setting and the needs that their school has decided. But it can range from pairing up with somebody and doing a home visit to go and find a student or, you know, doing credit recovery stuff with students during the school day.
Dr. Allen.
Yes.
So it's, it's a little concerning, we've increased 41 students that have decided Johnston County Public Schools, they dropped out. But just looking at this and, and over the past couple of days, I had an opportunity to just speak to a high school principal. And three of the seven of North Johnston High School, I believe, three of the eight, basically were put in the JCC GED program, which my understanding counts against us as far as a dropout is concerned. So question one is, how many of these students took that route? Because I think they're still trying to better themselves in a GED at the least. It's very unfortunate that they dropped out, but from, from this classification. So the second piece is, you know, are, we have hubs all across the county now, but we're seeing an increase in dropouts. So my question is, how are they assisting us in these drop, you know, to, for this dropout? Because my impression, and maybe I misunderstood it, was, you know, that was going to assist us and, and we've seen an influx this year. So, you know, I, I know the GED side is nothing we can control because that's from the state. So how many of the 41 took that route and are still in that program? Because they need to be in that program at least to get something to, to better themselves in, in the future for career-wise. But, you know, how, how is the hubs across the county assisting us to make sure that we can do a better job of this?
So one thing that the Choice Hubs are doing really well is they're helping students transition back in. But they're also extremely appealing to our students to come back in, which, which I think is a plus. But one thing that you have to recognize when we're attracting students to come back in who have previously, previously dropped out, that student may think that, okay, I've got this, all this other stuff going on in my life to the point that I think that I can do this again, let me go back. Well, if they count it as a drop against us in 2017, 2018 and come back to a Choice Hub and decide, okay, maybe I wasn't quite there, and, and they drop out again, it will count additionally. So some of these may be duplicates, like every, it won't count twice for us in one year, but yes, it will continue to count against us any year that they re-enroll and, and then withdraw. So the Choice Hub, it's twofold. It's wonderful that they're helping with students' transition and, and I was able to hear some success stories when I met with the Student Services Team at Cleveland High School, I think it was yesterday, the days are looping together. And they were sharing that, you know, when they've had students come in and they were not ready for the traditional school day, Choice Hub really helped them to get back on track. And then they were able to integrate them into the traditional day and they found success moving on. But then again, we also have students who in previous years may have gone to a program like Star Academy or Penn Foster. And Penn Foster is, is a quite pricey, compared to free, appropriate public education. So we, we may also be attracting some of, of those candidates who would have all otherwise gone different routes.
Do we have any idea of these numbers? How many may have dropped out one year, came back for choice and then dropped out again?
We do, just because I met with them yesterday and I have theirs definitely off the top of my head. If you look at Cleveland High School, they have 18. And actually, when I was speaking with them, they were counting 19 because again, these fluctuate by day. They shared with me that 14 of those 19 were re-dropouts. Yeah, so, I mean, we want, if, if students want to come back to us, we want them with open arms. But we might have repeat.
Do we know what the greatest calls for them to be dropping? Like is there one thing or a multiple, maybe three or four things that we can give them or help them, that emotional component that they're missing that we can prevent the dropout from happening?
I think that the charge that the district has given and, and that we continue to try to move forward with is building relationships and that helps tremendously. And, and I think that our student advocates and all of our schools are working very hard to, to build those relationships with students who are otherwise not prioritizing school at the time. So for the reasons, we have different reason codes, but that's not necessarily the reason behind the reason code. And, and when I presented in the fall about this, reason codes were questioned of how do we determine those? And there wasn't consistency last year. And it's one of my goals, and for student advocates who are watching, surprise for them, I want to meet with all of them sometime by the end of this year so that we can have one-on-one conversations of every single child that, that was a dropout for them to determine consistently, what do we really want to call the code for this situation? Because it could be that they could put on their sheet that it was engagement, but then when I'm reading through their reasons of what's happened or their comments, I might see that, oh, they were kicked out of their house at one point. Oh, they had a discipline issue that really disrupted their, their, what else is going on with them. So we'll be trying to get more consistent to have codes across the board.
Okay. I'm also curious, do we track students who leave us for the GED track to see, do they actually complete the GED program?
We do because if they complete the GED program, then it, it helps our graduation cohort rates. Like it, it doesn't help us in terms of a dropout, but it does help us in terms of, of graduation rates. So we do follow back up on students and try to see when they've completed. And we urge them to code it as such in Power School so that it is going to go, give us appropriate. them to code it as such in Power School so that it is going to go, give us appropriate credit.
How many of those do actually complete? I mean, is it half, more than half?
This, earlier this year, when we were trying to find students that were no-shows, I know that we celebrated via electronically once or twice. I'm not sure, you know, across the board, I don't have specific numbers on that. I think that would take a collaboration with the community college to figure out real definite numbers, but just to give you an idea, I know we celebrated two success stories with that at the beginning of the school year.
And then I'm assuming in the fall, you're going to be able to give us the subgroup data?
Yes.
Okay.
Definitely.
Any more questions? Thank you, Dr. Allen.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next section is Johnston County Planning Board Documents with the Honorable Mr. Allen Delane sitting in the back. He knows the challenges of the growth of Johnston County, and I commend you, sir, on what you have to engage every month, the number of subdivisions that come up. And I have to say, with you being in here, the number one challenge of citizens and growth of accelerated growth of a county is, how can you put a subdivision in a feeder pattern that's capped? But we have laws we've got to go by, right, Mr. Delane? And, you know, we're blessed to live in a county that's growing, and with a growing county creates opportunities for us as a school system. I think our county is growing because of our school system, and it brings commerce to Johnston County. But we have to stay engaged with our county commissioners to make sure that schools or infrastructure as well. And, you know, we've got to have seats for our students to go with the subdivision. So that's the challenges of a growing county, but we could be in the opposite. We could be in a county that's closing schools and we're not. So thankful for all our teachers and thankful for all our stakeholders for putting up with the challenges we have in Johnston County, and we will eventually catch up with our school growth, I hope, and infrastructure. With that being said, we have a budget work session Monday, April 29th, at 5:00 p.m. Our next board meeting is May 14th, 2019, with the closed session beginning at 2:00 and open session beginning at 4:00. Dr. Renfro.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that the board return to executive session for the purpose of consulting with the attorney and discuss personnel items in accordance with North Carolina General Statutes 115(c)(319) and 143(c)(318)11.
Entertainer motion.
So moved.
Motion to Teresa Zuccassi, second by Todd Sutton. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries 7-0.